Good evening. Calling the meeting to order. Thank you and welcome to the West Hartford Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is Tuesday, February the 7th, 2023. Charlotte, may you please begin with the roll call?
Dr. Chang.
Present.
Mr. Goldman.
Here.
Dr. Harris.
Here.
Dr. Kamoff.
Here.
Ms. Nazarella.
Present.
Dr. Steinberg.
Here.
Dr. Thomas Farquharson.
Here.
Student Representative Megan Murphy.
Here.
In place of Caitlin Strifcave, Ryan Zedanowicz.
Here.
Thank you. And Ryan, may you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. We do not have a revision to the agenda order, and now it is time for public communications. This is an opportunity where we're able to hear from you your thoughts, your questions, your suggestions. Each individual is allowed three minutes to speak, and when you come to the podium, we ask for you, please to share your name, your town of residence. Please be mindful of Charlotte, who will hold up a yellow card when you have one minute remaining in your time, and when your time has expired, we ask for you to please respectfully take your seat, and a red card will be held up at that time. Please be mindful that it is a board policy that we do not make comments during or following public comments. However, please be aware that we are attentively listening to what is being shared. We also know with respect to public comments, we begin by prioritizing those speaking on agenda items. So I do have a list here, one a list for those on agenda items and those on general comments. However, there were no names written down for agenda items. The agenda items for today are adoption of the Capital Improvement Plan, Connecticut Grown or Connecticut Kids Grant, pre-K update, and financial report. So I will ask, is there anyone here who would like to speak on an agenda item? Once again, anyone here speaking on an agenda item? All right, now moving to the list of general comments. There is one name listed here. We'll begin with Joette. Is Joette here? Yes, thank you again. Please share your name and your town of residence.
Good evening. My name is Joette, and I live in West Hartford. Tonight, I come to you to speak to you regarding the SEL curriculum, not necessarily for its removal, but rather that the board consider an opt-out option for those residents who feel that their children may not be emotionally or mentally ready to tackle this type of curriculum. I currently have a third grader, a kindergartner, and a rising kindergartner in our school system. And last year, my then second grader came home to me and told me about a book that she was read, where two animals who identified as male characters decided to get married. In the book itself, a vote was taken amongst the characters about whether or not it's acceptable for two boys to get married. This is not a topic that I had yet addressed with my children, nor had even considered doing so because I did not feel that my children were mentally or emotionally ready to do so. This book was not on the list of books that were published and approved by the board. This year, as my children got ready to rise in their grades, I contacted the school's principal and the school curriculum specialist and asked if there was an opt-out option for my children as to this particular piece of the curriculum, and I was told there was not. Next year, as my daughter enters fourth grade, on the book of approval list of books, there is a book that is particularly called Ho Anani Warrior Princess. In this book, a Hawaiian princess neither identifies as male nor female. For me personally, I find this problematic. My family immigrated here from Vietnam, so it is not hard to see by looking at me that I identify as Asian. To have this book read as part of the SEL curriculum on the topic of gender identity, but also as a reflection of the Asian culture, I personally find particularly offensive. My request, again, is not that the curriculum be removed, but that there be an option and accommodation for those families who do not feel that their children are ready to address these topics at their age. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There is no one else listed here on the list. However, we'll extend the invitation to those who are here. Is there anyone who would like to speak on a general comment? Please come to the podium and share your name and your town of residence, please.
Ati Lord in West Hartford. "Under Our Control." This was a statement made by Assistant Superintendent McKernan at the last meeting. I think that this reflects how the whole of WHPS views our children and by extension, our rights as parents. Our children are under your control. My children are not under any of your control, and this is why. When my daughter was a senior in Conard, when Principal Duarte was in position, I mean, not power, and now HR Director, there was an incident. My daughter went to her teacher, her trusted adult. It was sorted. The issue was addressed by the teacher, to me, the parent. We resolved it, and we were ready to move on. However, the principal, Mr. Duarte, and the administration were not. I got a phone call from my daughter to say that she was being summoned to the principal's office. I asked her why. She said, "I don't know." I said, "You are to say nothing. I've already told your principal that he is not to speak to you under any circumstances without me present." She proceeded. I called the office. I was finally put through to Assistant Principal Fisk, who was in the office with my daughter behind closed doors with nobody else present, to discuss a complaint she made for sexual harassment. I told him to release her and put her back in her classroom. He refused. He denied her to leave the room. I had to ask three times before he allowed her to return to her room. He thought she was under his control. She was not. Ms. Steinberg, you stated that our children are safer in school. That same daughter was choked in second grade, and nobody told me. I found out two months later. A locker fell on her. I was not told until after school, and then I was told, "Well, she has an egg on her head. You might want to get her doctor to check it out." My kid was not safe in school. Our children are not under control, but you will vote for $85,000, you will vote it down for a math tutor during pandemic times. Ms. Farquharson, Steinberg, and Plune voted against $85,000 for a tutor, yet we were okay with $100,000 being proposed for a PR firm. That's a fail. The statistics from the state state that our children in this district, their math and literacy is declining, especially among black students. In fact, in 10 years, those statistics state that black students have not gone beyond 50%. We'll send them to the psychologist, though. That's a fail. Stop listening to your lawyers. Start listening to yourselves. Start listening to the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to make any comments? Please come to the podium, share your name and your town of residence.
Whoops. Can you make this midget size? There we go. All right. My name's Cindy Goethe, and I'm from West Hartford. Didn't think I'd be here doing this again, but here I am complaining yet again about our special ed system in this town. My daughter is in the STRIVE program this year. She's a senior, and she is thriving. She made maximum honors. So this difference in the school and her in a smaller classroom setting is making a world of difference for her. I had a PPT meeting a couple weeks ago and asked about an independent psych evaluation that took me about two years to get accomplished between the school fighting me on it and letting me have my own doctor and COVID and all that. So I finally got the thing done during COVID, and it was what the Conard psychologist and all the staff admittedly said it's the worst evaluation they've ever seen in their entire career. This doctor was referred to me by my advocate, who had no experience with him, but had heard he was great, and he was referring to other patients in my daughter's evaluation about males, about alcohol and drug abuse, which I know my daughter doesn't do. So I had no faith in that report because obviously I couldn't tell which patient he was discussing because he was jumping all over the place. And I asked in my PPT with Ted Dillon last June after school was out for another independent eval, obviously because they all said that wasn't worth the paper it was written on. And the town also told me they did not pay him for his services because it was so poor. And he told me I could have another one. They offered the town's doctor again, and I said I wanted time to think about trying to find my own. And now that I had a PPT a couple weeks ago, I brought this up again and said, you know, I'm ready to go ahead with this. And I was told by the new person who took Ted's place that, oh, she didn't know anything about it. And then she said she would need to speak to Ted. I got an email from her yesterday, basically one sentence that said, "Your daughter already had an independent eval. Best regards." So that's our school system, again, failing my child and I'm sure many others. She's a senior. She has a few weeks, a few months left. What's the big friggin' deal? You know, you guys are going to be rid of me in a few months. I don't understand why you can't get a simple evaluation that is clearly warranted, and the one that was done, just because I was told to pick that doctor, doesn't mean that that's acceptable. It's not a proper evaluation of my child, and she deserves a proper diagnosis. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? With that, we will pause on public communications. Now, moving on to non-staff communications and reports, and this is where we're able to hear from our student representatives. And I must say, before we begin with our student representatives, and you're already smiling. I told you I was going to call you out on this. Yes, we do have Ryan Zedanowicz, who is here in place of Caitlin, but we certainly want to acknowledge and say hello again to you, Ryan, because for those who may not be familiar or aware, Ryan's father used to be a teammate here on the Board of Education. He currently is a town counselor. So it is, it's quite wonderful to see you, young man, but I won't embarrass you anymore. And so with that, we will begin with Megan, please, to share your highlights, please.
Good evening, everyone. So starting out with tomorrow, during our community block, at the very beginning, we're going to have a dragon parade to celebrate Chinese Lunar New Year, and it's a really great way. This hasn't really been done, I don't think, ever before at Conard. But all of the Chinese classes are going to help. We have some freshmen doing the dragon. I know my friend and I were doing red envelopes, passing them out. I think it's going to be really great for all the classrooms. They're going to come out and stay in the hallways throughout the community block in the very beginning. So that'll be great. There is an article in the West Hartford Patch about one of our senior exchange students, Paul Gogelik. He's from Switzerland, and so that was a really great read and highlight for him. Two of our athletes were named CIAC Scholar Athletes, both seniors, Macy McVie and Jackson Moorheart. Two, I think, two Conard students presented at the Youth Empowerment Symposium at CCSU about code switching. So that was really interesting to hear and great for them to discuss that. There's been some day in the lives going on in the past two weeks at Conard. Cedric and Bristow students have gotten to tour the school before they come to Conard next year, and it's been really great for them to see some of our student leaders helping out, touring them around the school. There was Choir Fest last week where Conard, Cedric, and Bristow students performed, and fifth graders got to watch. It was really all about them performing together and appreciating music, and so that was great. Next week, we have Historical Figure Day for one of our acting classes. Some of the figures will be Princess Diana, Stan Lee, and more. And lastly, but not least, frozen tickets are on sale, and everyone is really excited about that. So I recommend getting your tickets before they sell out.
Thank you, Megan. Ryan?
So also, eighth graders came to Hall for a day in the life. This was hosted by Link Crew. They were showed around the school. This year, we wanted to focus more on electives this year because previously in the past, we usually do this towards the end of the year. But since eighth graders are going to start choosing their classes towards the end of February, we wanted to give them a day in the life and kind of introduce them to a bunch of different electives. This could be including, you know, different art classes and kind of what those look like. So instead of focusing on, you know, what the high school life is like, we kind of wanted to introduce to them engineering and all the great electives that are offered at Hall High School this year. Hall Boys Track and Field won the CCCs this year. Midterms exams have recently come to a close, and we're moving on to quarter three. Pops and Jazz tickets are now for sale, and everyone's super excited about that. It's always a big, big event going on. West Hartford Police Department recently came in and gave a presentation about DUI prevention. And I think that's about it all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ryan. Nicely done, Ryan. Nicely done, Megan. Megan, I have to confess, when you were talking about the frozen tickets, I was so tempted to say, "Let it go, let it go," but we'll not do that. Thank you both so very much. And as you, Ryan, but as you know, we're so honored and glad to have you here. However, you are students first. But any point in time, if you need to depart the meeting early, please, you have our blessing in doing so. And with that, we will move on to unfinished business, where we have adoption of the Capital Improvement Plan for 2023, 2024. We have a recommendation that the Board of Education adopt the Capital Improvement Plan for this time period, and we have our teammates coming to the table, and we thank you so very much. That's all right. Thank you very much, and passing it to you, please.
Well, thank you for having us here. We're here to, again, present the Capital Improvement Plan, and we have our team, Bob Palmer and Liz Hewitt. So I'll turn it over to Bob because he certainly has the greatest part of our details here.
So we presented the plan in December. We're back today to help to answer any questions or concerns that you have. And that's really it at this point. Anything from you?
Yep.
All right. Thank you. Teammates, questions? Again, this was presented to us in December. We had plenty of time to think and ask intermittent questions. Anything that comes to mind at this time? All right. Well, with that, oh, pardon. Yes, yes. Okay.
I just had actually two separate questions. One is about something on page four where it said that extended delivery dates and substantial cost increases and schedule adjustments have been made. So I was curious, if you sign a contract with a contractor to do this work, is that then revised later on because of escalating costs and other issues of, let's say, supply changes, or is that contract stand the way it is?
It could go either way. It depends on the language when we typically, when we sign the contract. So they're generally locked in to that price, though if it's our doing, then they're probably, they would be due an escalation fee if we were delaying the project for some reason or schedule-wise. But if it's, if it's on their side in the supply chain, and they had committed to the dates of the contract, then it's certainly on them. But if it's something on our side, it would be our responsibility to provide an escalation. But generally, if the contractor signs a contract with dates of completion and deliveries and all that types of things, and those don't happen, it's really on them. So.
So including, you know, supplies like that were negotiated?
Sure. So, yeah, right.
Okay. So they can't come at a different date and sort of increase that?
No, no. So.
And then the other question I had is that you've proposed some of these costs like way out, like we're looking at, you know, eight, almost, some of them maybe 10 years out. How do you, I'm just curious, are those set prices? Are you, do you build those prices based on what you see today, or how do you know in 10 years?
Yeah, it's really hard to know that. So really, those are placeholders at this point, and you'll see slight escalations in the accounts over the years, anticipating inflation and ongoing costs going up. But we really don't know that. So it's really placeholders. And really, what we do is we work on, we present you a two-year package here, but really, I'm planning for three years in the background. So I'm trying to estimate costs, but it's very, of course, in the last few years, it's been very difficult. So that's really what it is. So those future years beyond are just placeholders. And again, priorities will change, programs will change, and we'll have to shuffle the list around a little bit sometimes to do different projects. But that's, that's what, those are kind of buckets of projects and costs that we think we'll have in the future. But as you see, even in this year, we added a project for WOLCA, just as a need that arose in the last year. So.
Thank you.
Ethan?
So I thought I'd ask this in the last time, but maybe not. So if I did, if I didn't, I apologize. Is there any recap of prior year '21, '22 to say, or has, I don't remember seeing it. So it's come, it's come, but, or is it here, and I missed it? What I was looking for was what's on target, what's unplanned, what's still open, and what went up or down? From last year. I mean, because we go into this year, to next year, but usually I'm used to seeing how we did last year. You got it?
Yeah. So on page three, Table two, lists the projects of what was proposed in February of last year.
Right.
As part of the Capital Improvement Program. And then I talk in the other column about projects that were completed or delayed.
I was looking more for just the costs.
The costs.
Costs. I'm sort of cost-based.
Yeah. So we don't manage the costs of these projects. All capital projects are managed and handled by the town, and so I don't have that data.
Okay. It's a disconnect, but all right. All right. Thank you.
Well, remember also that you're, you're going ahead and you're proposing this to the council, and the council is then the ones this folds into, as Bob explained, this folds into the town's general capital improvement as simply a piece of that, along with all the other town projects, including the Elmwood and everything else that they're, that they're doing on that.
No, I understand, but I just, to me, you'd want to complete the loop and just, you don't know what maybe needs to be adopted for future years. So.
Claire?
As I understand correctly, the schools don't own, the Board of Ed does not own the buildings. All the buildings and the infrastructure is all owned by the town. So we have no.
I just, it's, you know, when things get proposed, if it's going up, you want to understand it's going up. I don't know. It is what it is, but it just seems strange. So.
No, hear you, hear you. And those granular details are attended, too. We may just not be attentive to them, but certainly our town is. And don't you worry, we'll have lots of granular details to go through come the budget time. And so, but points well received. Any other questions at all? All right. Well, with that, then, seeking a motion that the Board of Education adopt the Capital Improvement Plan for 2023, 2024.
So moved?
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, we've already had preliminary discussion. Any additional discussion? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bob.
Moving on now to new business, where we're going to receive the Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Grants contract. We have a recommendation that the Board of Education adopt a resolution to enter into a contract with the Connecticut Department of Agriculture to participate in the 2022 Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Grant Program. All right. Liz, passing it to you.
Thank you. So Charter Oak International Academy applied for funding through the Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Grant Program. I'm happy to say they were awarded a grant of $11,000, which they are going to use to develop a series of garden education lessons for each of the grade levels at Charter Oak. They'll be using these funds to develop curriculum, to purchase garden materials and books, to conduct outdoor field experiences for each of the students, and then ultimately to create plans to expand a farmed school program to the other schools. In order to execute the grant contract, the Connecticut Department of Agriculture requires that the Board of Ed adopt a resolution to do so. It's somewhat unusual. Not all of the Connecticut State Departments require that, but the Agriculture Department does, and so you have this formality of a resolution before you for your consideration.
Thank you. Teammates, any questions or comments? Claire?
I just wanted to extend a congratulations. This is amazing and so beneficial for kids to see this at such a young age, also that it's spreading out. I'm just curious, is it teachers? Who's, who's the point person, or who's taking on this big initiative as in a staff member?
So it's my understanding that Liz Nasimento, who is our IB Coordinator at Charter Oak, actually did the legwork and applied for this grant and went through the whole process. actually did the legwork and applied for this grant and went through the whole process. And she will be spearheading the development of the lessons for the students.
It actually goes back to when, when we were first looking at the design and the building of Charter Oak. It was with the idea of the courtyard and other spaces being those learning gardens and really trying to incorporate those spaces. And so this is just another way of getting some resources to develop that.
Jason, and then Gail.
Yeah, I just wanted to also add the note of congratulations. And this is something that, being a Charter Oak parent, that many other parents have been supportive of. And so the, the funding will, will, you know, not only help address the, the need for this curriculum and for the space, but it will also really help the community to feel validated in the work that they've done and maintaining the gardens and other, you know, programs like teaching kids about composting and, and other issues like that. So, so this is really a wonderful program.
Gail?
Yeah, I also want to say that I think it's a great program, really important for kids to learn about this. I just had a question about this resolution. Is this, and this resolution is going to allow our superintendent to sign a contract with the state?
Yes, for $11,000 just for this grant.
So the contract is just about obtaining those funds? Or is the contract extends to something beyond that?
So the, the contract allows us to accept the funds, conduct the scope of work as laid out in the contract, which talks about how we had applied to use those funds and requires us to file a final report in order to receive the remaining funds. But it's specific to this one grant.
Okay. And is, is it just like a year, the contract is just, the limitation of the contract is one year, or?
It's just a little bit longer than that. The grant term goes through July 2024. The state wanted to allow us to have this summer to do the curriculum writing for it. So most of the activity will occur over this coming summer through the next year, and then we will draft the final report.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other? Thank you. Just sharing, our teammates are just sharing the contracts. So thank you, Jason. Thank you, Gail. Any other questions at all? And our secretary is going to sign the contract. I just make sure folks understand what sidebar we're having. Yes, yes. All right. Any other questions, teammates, or comments? All right. So with that then, seeking a motion that the Board of Education adopt a resolution to enter into a contract with the Connecticut Department of Agriculture to participate in the 2022 Connecticut Grown for Connecticut Kids Grant Program. Is there a motion? Thank you, Ari, for making the motion. Jason, thank you for seconding. Any additional discussion? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any objections? The ayes have it. Thank you so much, and certainly, congratulations. Thank you, thank you. Now moving on to our superintendent's report and passing it to Dr. Mar.
All right. I don't have a lot to go on, so why don't we, if Carrie and Irene want to start getting set up? Because I know it'll take a little bit of time with the screen and such. So I wanted to, to share a little bit of, because I know that I was in contact with you over the weekend with the update over the weather and some of the issues that we had with that. As you know, Hall lost power for a number of hours. It was restored. That was based on an outside circumstance with a tree that, that took down a line with some neighboring houses as well. Luckily, that was restored before we had any issues with, with freezing. Sometimes in the past, what we've had is we've had, if we have issues during cold snaps or cold periods like that, we wind up having units on the roof sometimes, ventilation units that can freeze in place. And when they then thaw, there can be some damage. And so we were luckily able to avoid that. And as I shared with you, Aiken lost power when a EverSource transformer wound up getting damaged and the power was phasing or fluctuating internally. When that happens, we turn off a building. Because when power is phasing, systems can be disrupted, like a lot of our, our switchgear and computer systems and a lot of the electronics, it doesn't work well when there's phasing power or fluctuating power. And so EverSource was, they had a unit, they brought in a generator, set that up so that we could get power going to the heating system. Because again, it doesn't take long when it's negative 10 out to, and you don't have any power flowing in a school, in a building, to have that drop down to a level that we were concerned about for systems. They brought in a generator, were able to set that up. And then they were actually able to go ahead and replace the transformer ahead of schedule. And so it was back on the EverSource grid by the start of school on Monday. So that was good for that. The only other damage significant that we had was if you happened to be near Connerd, near the cafeteria, on Monday, you would have seen one of the big windows had a spider glass shatter to it. And what we think happened was those older windows are in metal frames. And we think that it got so cold that the metal actually shattered the plate glass for that. And so that is being replaced as well. So that was our, that was our storm damage. It was an interesting, interesting 24 hours for the ground crew and for Bob and his, his group. They did a fantastic job with that. If you get a chance, I also shared with you to stop up to Aiken to see their mural project. It really came out well, and I know it's something that we've been working on with a number of our elementary schools, and it's certainly something that showcases that community. And then the last piece I wanted to share is we are getting our, the start of what we had talked a little bit about before, our next-gen educator program. I mentioned that was a development with CCSU. These are students that are pursuing either elementary or secondary certification at CCSU. And this program is allowing them to work as substitutes and TAs in our buildings when they're not having class. Many of them have days that they've designated to us. And so it's something that Julia Duarte and his office have been initiating and coordinating. And we're excited to, to have this group of, of young, future teachers in places. We know that's the best recruiting that we can do in many cases. And so we're excited about that. And that's all I have. And so I will turn it over to Irene Garnot.
First, if I may just see.
I'm sorry, of course. Any questions?
Yes, please. Teammates, any questions regarding the superintendent report that we received? Thank you so much, Dr. Mar.
All right. I will turn this over to Carrie Jones and Irene Garnot and to Paul, who will be presenting on pre-kindergarten.
I was, and you kind of did my job. I was going to simply say welcome. And you all know Carrie Jones, our Director of Elementary Education. But it's just a privilege to welcome to the table Irene Garnot, who is the star of the show tonight. She is our Department Supervisor for Early Education and really a dramatically important member of the educational team here, overseeing all of our pre-K programs for the district. So Irene.
That means it's on, right? Okay, good. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm always excited to talk about early childhood ed. And we're here tonight to provide you with an update since the last report in 2015 that came to the board. And much has changed since then, and we're excited to share with you our growth and the current state of early childhood in West Hartford. So you can see, we have nine classrooms, one at Smith and five at Charter Oak. Those are our magnet schools. We have three additional classrooms at Webster Hill. And we started back in 2004. So under the School Readiness Grant from the Office of Early Childhood, general education pre-K was first offered at Smith's Dem. And in the following years, an additional three classrooms were added at Charter Oak, at Webster Hill, and one at Bugbee and Brayburn. So depending on enrollment needs, that classroom switched during the time. And in 2016, with the reopening of Charter Oak, the Bugbee-Brayburn classroom moved to the newly renovated Charter Oak campus. And then we added an additional, an additional three classrooms through a Smart Start grant from the state of Connecticut. That was five at Charter Oak. Then in 2021, an additional two classrooms were added through the Smart Start for Recovery Grant. So that's a grant that came out of the COVID-19 pandemic. And they wanted to make early childhood, high-quality early childhood, more accessible to families. So they expanded that grant. We took advantage of that, adding the two classrooms at Webster Hill. So that brings us to our nine that we have today. So just a little background on what the School Readiness versus Smart Start grants are. The School Readiness Grant is a grant that comes to West Hartford as a community. It supports 54 seats in both public and private pre-K settings. There's a School Readiness Council led jointly by the mayor and the superintendent's offices or their designees. So Paul and Carrie often sit in as the superintendent's designee. And Deb Zipkin, who heads up the FRC, is the mayor's designee. And that group oversees making sure that all of the quality indicators are being met, not only in the public schools, but also in those additional programs in the private sector. There are 26 seats that are in West Hartford Public Schools across our, actually, four of our nine classrooms. And then there are 28 seats that are located in four private programs within town. This grant also brings quality enhancement dollars that provide professional development for teachers across town, parenting support in classes and materials. So we, you know, one year we bought many, many multicultural books with materials when, in the middle of COVID, when we couldn't really bring everyone together for professional development. So we tried to pivot and use the, the grant that way. So Smart Start is a little bit different. The Smart Start Grant and the Smart Start for Recovery Grant are state funds that support the expansion of general education pre-K only in the public schools. And our five Smart Start classrooms directly support 75 students in that way. And all nine classrooms now serve both three- and four-year-olds. And the Smart Start and School Readiness Grants enable a differentiated tuition using a sliding scale provided by the Office of Early Childhood, and it's based on income and family size. And while the scale is only required for the state-funded seats, which is 101 out of the 144 that we have, we apply it to all our families so that we ensure an equitable experience for everyone. And the, there's a little tweak with the Recovery Grant. So while it's, those two extra classrooms are hosted at Webster Hill, we have to prioritize them per the grant requirement. So we prioritize it by the experience, pre-K experience that our kindergarteners have. So every fall, we do a little kindergarten survey. We find out who had pre-K experience or who didn't. And then we prioritize those neighborhoods. So they are also able to apply to Webster Hill and anyone who lives in Webster Hill. And those neighborhoods are Wedding Lane, Wolkett, Smith, Webster Hill, and Hillcrest. All right. So there's 16 very cute children in every classroom. There are six three-year-olds and 10 four-year-olds. There's one certified teacher and one early childhood paraprofessional. And I call them an early childhood paraprofessional, not just a paraprofessional, because they have to have a certain degree of early childhood credits and background before we can bring them on board. And they really act as a second teacher and a co-teacher in the classroom. And then depending on the specific needs of the students, sometimes there's an additional special education para in a classroom. So you might see even three adults in an early childhood classroom. All right. So capacity and lottery. So as I think I said before, we have 144 seats across those nine classrooms. And we have about 90 new vacancies each year. That's because our three-year-olds stay and they loop up as four-year-olds. So they, those are the lucky winners that get two years of pre-K with us. But it does leave an opportunity for new four-year-olds to join us so that we can still capture a few more students before they get to kindergarten. The acceptance rate is not great because we have a really high demand. We had 510 applications last year for 86 available seats. This year, to date, we have about 450 applications, and there's still a solid four weeks left in the application window. So we anticipate it being about the same demand, if not even more, for the coming year. Each year, our special education population grows. So although we're labeled as general education classrooms, we have about 18% of our children have IEPs, which is just a little bit higher than the 15.5% that's across the district from K to 12. And each year, the number increases. So as we grow and evolve as a program, so does our staffing needs. So these seats are offered, because it's not universal pre-K yet, I say yet, I'm hoping, hopeful always, we have to offer these seats through a lottery system. So the lottery is open for applications starting in early January. That was on the ninth this year. And it'll close on March 3rd at 4:00 p.m. Families are notified of their acceptance or waitlist status late in March. And then they are pulled off the waitlist throughout the summer. So, and it really depends on how many children leave. They might move, they might have a different circumstance. So as they pull out, we pull in. So it could be anywhere from five come off the waitlist in a year to 25 or 30. It really depends. The lottery is run by our own Elizabeth Hewitt, and she does an amazing job of that. It's a very difficult chore. And it meets the parameters set by the state grants and the district. And so we're balancing socioeconomic status, neighborhood versus magnet, age and gender. And in the 2022-23 lottery, oh, I already talked about that. Did I say we had 510 applications for 86 spots? I did. Sorry about that. And we are subsidized by the two grants that I mentioned earlier, as well as parent and caregiver tuition. So tuition is determined on a sliding fee scale provided by the Office of Early Childhood, and that ranges anywhere from $0 to a $5,000 cap for the 10-month school year. If, and that's just for the school year, school day programming. And the sliding scale, it provides access to families that may not otherwise be able to afford high-quality early childhood ed. And then if families need wraparound care because they're coming from a two-parent working family or a single working family, there is wraparound care at each site that is open. And that's a separate, it's a separate agency that runs it and a separate tuition.
Do you want to talk about the 60%?
Yes. So, and we balance, when I refer to that socioeconomic balance, the state requires us to have 60% of our families coming from below the 75th percentile of state median income. And then we have 40% that are coming from above. And if you have a whole nother night dedicated to me, I can tell you why that, why that ratio happens. We also are accredited by the National Association for the Education of Young Children. We also call it NIAAC or NISI. It's a lot less to say. It undergoes, and we go, undergo that accreditation process every five years. It is a requirement to receive both of those state grants that I mentioned. And it's a rigorous process, and it includes meeting hundreds of specific criteria, like about 400 specific criteria in the categories of relationships, curriculum, teaching, assessment, teachers, health and safety, staff competencies, families, community, physical space, and leadership and administration. The last time we had a visit was in January of 2020, slipped in right before the pandemic. And while programs can pass accreditation with an 80% score, we scored at 100% plus. We got some bonus points in nine out of 10 of our standards with a 95 in one area. It's something that we are incredibly proud of as a program and a department. And, you know, I, I, it's all the teachers. So they do an amazing job. And I, I know we have a couple of folks that can attest to that as well, sitting there. So impact, really, so why? Why do we have early childhood in West Hartford? Why are we investing these dollars? Decades of research show us that investments in high-quality early childhood ed provide positive outcomes for children, lifelong positive outcomes for children. Increased kindergarten readiness, lower dropout rates, lower referrals to special education, higher graduation rates, and lower incarceration rates. And while many of those benefits are felt longitudinally, we wanted to just give you a little snapshot. So we're taking Charter Oak as our sort of micro community and give you a little more information about how pre-K at Charter Oak has impacted our kindergarteners. Carrie, you want to talk about this one?
So our kindergarten, one of the pieces we wanted to see is, is pre-K impacting? Now that we have these new classrooms, is pre-K impacting kindergarten readiness? And of course, there are measures, there are social-emotional measures, there are self-regulation skills, collaboration skills, that certainly we see anecdotally. You know, children who get accustomed to their school environment earlier transitioned into kindergarten generally more readily. But from an academic lens, which obviously we're here, here to learn as, those skills as well, we do see on average, over the period before the pandemic, we will, we looked at that as, as steady data. For the three years prior to the pandemic closures, we were 10.3 points higher in early literacy scores at the start of kindergarten versus children who did not attend our preschool programs. And 12.6 points higher in early mathematics skills, foundational math skills, counting and numeracy-type skills compared to children who did not attend West Hartford preschools. So we're very pleased to see, in addition to that ready transition into kindergarten, adaptability, flexibility, cooperation with peers, we also do see this academic benefit as well.
So another benefit that, and it came to me initially anecdotally, our ESOL teacher would come to me every fall and say, Irene, I don't know what to do with those preschoolers, but none of them are qualifying for ESOL. So I said, I want to, I want to learn more about that. So we. So we dug into the data a little bit. And so there's going to be, bear with me, because there's kind of a lot dense, dense information packed into this next slide. All new kindergarteners, as part of the registration, need to report on the languages that are spoken at home. So at the start of kindergarten, those who report languages other than English, they are tested to see if they qualify for ESOL services. When we look at incoming kindergarten students at Charter Oak who speak a language other than English, we see a difference in their ESOL, ESOL screening results. So it's between the ones that did have pre K and the ones who didn't have pre K. So over the past six years, there was a total of 95 Charter Oak students who did not attend pre K at Charter Oak and spoke a language other than English at home. Of those students who, again, did not attend pre K at Charter Oak, 43% of them qualified for ESOL services. Conversely, we observed 85 students who spoke another language at home other than English, but did attend our pre K program. Of those students who did attend, only 13% qualified for ESOL services. And what our ESOL teacher will tell you, they came in to the ESOL program at a much higher level. So the language rich environment of the early childhood classroom has the potential to bring students from having limited English proficiency to age appropriate fluency in even just one year. Those who benefit from two years of pre K enjoy additional rich oral language, vocabulary, syntax, and print, which really prepares them to engage more fully in the kindergarten curriculum. And I would be remiss if I don't talk about our teachers and the high quality instruction that they provide for young children. Again, we'd need a whole nother night for me to talk to you about play based curriculum. But what I will say is our play based pre K curriculum is foundational and flexible enough to allow for the needs of varying developmental stages of children. Each one comes in, in their own place, and this is a very adaptable and flexible curriculum. And a varying school, so it can be adapted to the IB theme, or the STEM theme, or the special education model as needed. The curriculum is inquiry based and really driven by supporting children and answering their questions about the world. So we know that young children need to be interested and, and excited about what they're learning to stay engaged. And that is what our curriculum does. And we refer to it as an emergent curriculum, following their questions. Teachers act as facilitators and co constructors of knowledge in these intentionally planned for and prepared environments. And finally, the early childhood curriculum addresses the whole child with a particular emphasis on social emotional skills. And then finally, we wanted just to talk to you a little bit about outreach and, and how we've become a destination and a model for local early childhood practitioners and neighboring districts. For example, the Yukon Pre K to third grade leadership cohort comes to visit us every spring to see best practices in early childhood in action. Additionally, we've also been represented on the national stage. We've presented at the NEUIC National Conference, and we've been featured in a five part series on Egotopia. So I don't know if you're familiar with Egotopia. It is a part of the George Lucas Educational Foundation, and it captures and shares best practices in education across the country. And even they are starting to do some work in Europe as well with the Lego Foundation. So all five of those videos were included in your packet, but we wanted to highlight one, just one tonight, as an example and for the viewing audience. And this one also features our, one of our teachers, Cindy Baron.
Just going to check out sound here. Make sure as fast as possible. We should, it should work. We talk a lot about the difference between documentation versus decoration. Oftentimes, a traditional bulletin board will have 15 to 20 of the, sort of the same project on it. And that maybe is more copying what a teacher does versus children's own experience. We're shifting how we think about that, helping teachers understand that the purpose of documentation isn't about decoration, and it's not about how cute can I make something look? It's about documenting the serious learning that happens for young children. When you walk down the hall and you see a display of student work and student learning, that story will include work samples, photographs, language samples, what were the children's questions? And then most importantly, we always include what the learning objectives are so that anyone that's coming by will be able to say, oh, wow, look at all the learning that happened. Our teachers are very collaborative, and one idea that they shared was a QR code. I can add a QR code to a display, and anyone that wants to, that happens to be in the room, can use their phone, scan it, and then watch a video of the learning happening right in front of them. They said it was reaching up to the sky. Today, I was working with Carver during choice time in the block area. Micah and Celeste over here were playing together. And he happened to notice a display. I was able to take out my phone, scan it. All right, you keep watching. We're going to get to see what your friends did in the block area. Are you ready? And he could actually watch Celeste and Micah building a structure from those blocks. A lot of times, if the children see somebody else doing something that looks interesting or fun, it might encourage them to give it a try. This one, Jason said, I made a tower this big. Because we document and display student learning, we send a message that we value their thinking and their understanding, and we value their questions about their world. We also send a message to adults in the lives of these children about the importance of the work that happens in an early childhood classroom and the importance of an inquiry based curriculum. My smooth moves.
So I wanted to end with the vision of the graduate. And one might think that this is very far away from our youngest learners. However, each of the elements we hope to see in our graduates are foundational in the early childhood classroom. Our primary goal in early childhood is to grow the disposition of being a learner and to provide, provide opportunities for children to learn about topics deeply and, and really, so they know what deep investigation looks like and feels like, and what it means to learn about something that way. By providing a physically and emotionally safe environment, grounded in genuine relationships, and fraught with authentic hands on experiences and student agency, we hope to instill a lifelong learning, a lifelong love of learning that our students will carry throughout their educational careers and beyond. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Excuse me, teammates, questions? Yes, Claire.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I have, I'm trying to figure out what questions to ask, because I, I have a lot. But a lot of it's about where we see the future in that this is a great program, but you said 16% acceptance. It, it really shows that a lot of people want this. But I'm, I'm curious, you say we have nine classes. My daughter went to Whitey Lane. She was in a special ed classroom with mainstream peers in that classroom, also Aiken. So I'm just curious why in a presentation, is NIAAC not in those schools? Why those numbers aren't included in your preschool population? And is your 18% with IEPs, does that include our kids at Whitey Lane? So I guess, why, why do you separate the groups?
They serve a very different purpose and program. So the Early Learning Center, ELC classrooms, and there are 10 classrooms. There are two at Aiken and eight at Wedding Lane, five of which at Wedding Lane are inclusion classrooms where there are children with identified special needs who may enter from private providers, from birth to three programs, and transition right at age three. They could turn age three tomorrow and be eligible to enter the Early Learning Center program. So that Early Learning Center program is designed to specifically meet our obligation to children with special needs as they transition. So those 10 classrooms are, there are 134 total children in the Early Learning Center in 10 classrooms. It's about the same size as 144 in nine classrooms. So the program serves a very particular special need. There are specialized staff on, on staff at Aiken and Wedding Lane to support the wide range of special needs that children may have, additional occupational therapists, speech and language therapists. So by consolidating the Early Learning Program Center at those two schools, they are able to better meet children's needs. They're not going across town. There are still children who do qualify at our full day program, but the full day program is, was designed really to meet that early learning experience, that pre K experience that we, as we said, we have about 86% of our children right now who attend through our pre K experience surveys. It's a little bit lower than it's been. It went down a bit during COVID. Some of the care providers closed down. In other cases, parents did, chose not to send their children. They may have been working from home. They may have chosen family member to care for their children. So we have about 86% of our children in our district who do have pre K or some type of formal early learning experience. So the, the full day program is designed to supplement that, particularly for families, as Irene mentioned, who demonstrate financial need and are unable to access other programs. But people have, you know, so the, the Early Learning Center is, is an early childhood program, but it has a very particular design. And, and it's also a half day program to meet the intensive needs of children. So I don't know if that helps Claire to clarify?
But I guess, so, so the programs, when you say the nine schools, that's full time. But they can come in with birth to three, and they have 18% identified special needs at this early, and they're not in Wedding Lane or Aiken?
So they would, if they would qualify, if they have an IEP, that would qualify them for the, for the ELC. But they also have choice. So some families that may prefer the full day will apply in the lottery. So those, that 18% is coming in organically through the lottery. Right? So we don't ask about IEP status when we're, we're doing the lottery. And, and sometimes too, children will come in and we don't know that they have a birth to three background, or maybe because of the pandemic lately, they haven't even engaged with birth to three. And then they come to us, and we sort of act as a screen and a, yeah, like a child find. So our special ed teams at the three schools support those children with their IEPs and their specialized needs. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so I guess, do you consider the mainstream peers at Aiken and Whitey Lane to be preschool students?
No, they're two separate.
Their inclusion peers at the Early Learning Center. It's a half day program.
But they're, they're, they're separate. I think the confusion.
That's a different lottery?
It's, no, it's a, the confusion is it's a different, it's a different program from what they're presenting on. They're presenting on the regular education pre K program. The ELC, the special needs program is an entirely separate, separate program, and it's not included in these numbers.
Other questions or comments? Gail.
I had a couple of questions. One is on the lottery. When I think of a lottery, I think of it's just sort of a random lottery, like people are, put their names in and then they get picked. But then you, you did make a statement that you are trying to balance it out for gender and some, a few other things. So can you explain how that type of lottery works?
Sure. So when families apply, they, they give us all of those demographics, and then we ask them to identify themselves in either Group A or Group B. Group A is falling under the 75th percentile of state median income. Group B is those that fall above. And then, so that gives them an A or B. So then they all apply. You can be the first one in January or the last one in March, and they all go into the pot. It gets mixed up. It's a random number selector. And then this is the hard part that Liz does, is then she looks, she goes through them and makes sure that we're meeting all of the, the guidelines and the parameters that the state grants put out. The magnet schools want 50/50 magnet neighborhood. So she works through all of that, and, and we come out with a perfectly balanced lottery acceptance list. And then Johnny moves to New Jersey, and then Johnny has to be replaced. So this is, I talked to parents a lot about this. So when we pull children off that waitlist, it's not really, if you're number one, you're the first one that we call. You're number one if you meet the same demographic profile as the child who left that space. So if it was a neighborhood income group B four year old, then that's who I would have to find next on the waitlist. So we try to be very transparent and clear with families that this gives you a suggestion of where you are on the waitlist. If you're in the top 10, you probably are feeling pretty good. If you're number 247, you are really going to want to look for Plan B. But does that help?
Yeah, so, because you also said you balance out for gender. So are you, how you're doing the sort of the same thing on the gender?
Absolutely, yep. There's a little more flexibility, like at Charter Oak, where there's five classrooms versus Smith where there's one.
Stratified random sample at the end is, I think that Irene did a, did a great job describing it. But if, if it's helpful, you can imagine if you had the entire population of applicants and, you know, you had those buckets of, okay, this is my, my above median, my above threshold income, my below, and then a sub bucket within that, if it were male versus female, or age three or age four, whatever those different parameters are, and you need so many of each of those balls. So everyone lands within those categorizations and then are randomly selected throughout. So, so when there's an opening that needs, you know, potentially a specific demographic, you have a whole pile of individuals that are in there, and a person can be randomly chosen from that pile.
This is also, this is a full day program?
It's a school day, school year program.
Yep. Thanks.
Jason.
Yes, thank you for the presentation, and I loved the pictures and the video. It's so amazing. I am so struck by the ESOL graph and the impact that that's having. I've seen it with my own kids and that same program, in your program. And the thing that I'm remembering is the role that ASL played in the classrooms. And I'm wondering if you can reflect, I know it wasn't a part of your presentation, but I'm wondering if you can reflect on the presence of ASL in the pre K classroom? And is, do you think that contributes to these kinds of language acquisition and, and therefore access to learning later on in the grades?
Yeah, I can't speak to access to later on, but, so Charter Oak in particular is a hub for students who are deaf and hard of hearing. And we, we will identify, because we're a hub, that's the only kind of priority spots that we save. So the, the deaf and hard of hearing team will let me know, ooh, we've got somebody coming down the pike. They're in birth to three, we're meeting on them. So we'll hold maybe one or two spots a year. At this point, teachers are, I won't say fighting, but having strong conversations about who gets to have those children in their classroom, because it does bring such a rich piece to our environment. ASL interpreters are with those children. So the classes, even if there's not a student who's deaf or hard of hearing, the early childhood classrooms often will use some basic sign. And certainly those that do have children with an interpreter are using more advanced sign. And it's, it's happening across the classrooms, certainly in the specific classrooms. And it is a wonderful way for young children to be able to communicate, especially if they have their own speech or language delays, because oftentimes they can do this before they can maybe say something, right? That's a fine motor skill. And you will hear, so I'll go in and interrupt a teacher and say, oh, you know, can I just talk to you for one second? And then inadvertently, oh, if some three year old comes up and needs her immediately, and she'll just do this and keep talking to me, and that child knows that that means wait. So it really also helps with classroom management and communication and, and learning in a different way. It's learning in a kinesthetic mode. So now they're learning the alphabet, and they're signing the alphabet at the same time. So it's not only words, but literacy pieces as well.
The other piece, when people hear play and they think about early childhood, they may think of it as, you know, we're having our educated early childhood educators and their support people. You know, you know, what are they really doing all day? Are they, are they providing childcare? And I will absolutely say they are not. It is intentional play. It is play based learning. So they're engaging in math work that is playful. So I think that really contributes as well to, to all learners and their oral language development. Our students who are learning, our multilingual learners, students learning English, but all children. It's, oral language is a critical piece to early literacy development, whether reading and writing. And so the more students can engage in playful learning experiences, whether it's a dramatic play center, and they have created, because they're really interested in airports, and they have created a center that is a ticket counter, and, you know, they've, they've just talked about the roles people play in those pieces, and they're interacting with each other in ways that are building their oral language. interacting with each other in ways that are building their oral language capacity and development, collaborating together, problem solving together. So it's the play-filled, playful, intentional environment of a pre-K classroom, an early childhood classroom, is is what really blossoms children. And we see it in those other academic results. So I think play, sometimes people out there in the world think, think of it as going to the the place full of balls to, you know, or the slide place, or whatever it is that I used to bring my children to. That's really fun. And by the way, the playground is a wonderful place to learn about problem solving and collaboration and taking turns and all those wonderful things. So play is central in this environment, and it's really, I think, what's caused us to have such success and become models really for our state and the nation.
Seeing the quality and outcomes of these programs and the applicants for these programs, five hundred and ten, we really need, really want more pre-K.
We did the numbers, right? What is it, thirty classrooms, Irene, just for fourth grade? I don't know.
I was just going to pass that question to Andy.
We've had, first of all, let me, let me parrot as well, just how much we all appreciate Irene and the work that you do on this. It's just been fantastic over the years. And you and I had many, many late-night conversations as we tried to figure out how to quarantine preschoolers and finally gave up during COVID and all of that stuff. But we've also had the conversation about, I don't think there's anyone who would who would disagree or argue with the value of early childhood intervention, either on special ed side, in the one hand, with our ELC in that in that program, but also on the general ed side. And we see it with the ESOL scores. We see it with school readiness. We see it showing up in places, and I know that Deb Zipkin could talk about this with the FRC, the idea of it shows up in in a stability of of a child's life and in the family. And I think we we see that piece as well in working with them. What it comes down to is, because it's capped at sixteen, and we want to maintain the standards for that, it's a very expensive endeavor. And just because, I wanted to add one thing, just to make sure it's understood, when we talk about how there's four hundred and fifty people on the lottery waitlist who who don't get into our spots, that doesn't mean they don't get preschool. It means that they are part of the eighty-six percent that that find it in a private provider or or in other locations. And so it's not an all or nothing for us. We tend to get anyone who's who's going to go to a private place will oftentimes throw their hat into our lottery, because frankly, it's it's in many cases, I don't want to say a better product, but it's it's a substantially well-researched product. And I think that people also understanding that the cap that the state puts on it can oftentimes be half of what a private situation might cost someone. So I think there's a number of of reasons to add more classrooms that's completely within your purview, and we've taken every opportunity we can to add classrooms. It just comes at a at a very significant cost. As it is, we're looking at the Smart Start classrooms for Whiting, for Webster Hill. Those two classrooms are coming off of ESAR. They're currently funded with ESAR, with the teachers and the paras and such, and those are coming off of ESAR at the end of the next budget year. So we already have those factored into if if those classrooms are going to continue, and I would imagine they will, those are already positions that you're going to have to find a home for in the general funds, because they were first, they were first with the Smart Start grants, and then they've been put into ESAR for the funding. So again, it's a great program. I know Irene would open up as many classrooms as as we could. It's just an issue of of space, and it's an issue of the economics.
Renee, and then Claire.
Thank you so much for sharing that. In terms of supporting this going forward, certainly the funding is an important part. But what about the infrastructure? Like, if the program were to grow, where where would the classrooms be housed within the district?
It's also a very good question. Bob Palmer and I talk about it often. I think, let's let's imagine that we get to expand, or even that universal pre-K happens at a at a national level. The idea is never to have the public schools completely take over early childhood for multiple reasons. They envision it as being a public-private partnership, sort of a mixed delivery model. So while I would anticipate we would grow significantly within the district, there would always still be that private piece. And and quite frankly, some families choose not to apply because they need full-day, full-year, summer programming. They don't want to, you know, have to kind of figure things out when we're out of school. So there's always going to be a place for the the private programs. But it would, it would be, you know, there's very specific criteria that we have to meet, as I mentioned in that accreditation piece. So we would, there's some construct, you know, a lot of construction costs. We were very lucky when we opened up at Webster Hill. I was like, what? You have three classrooms in a row with bathrooms in them?
They got the little potties.
And they got the little potties? We're in, we're taking it. So that's one of the reasons why we went to Web Hill, because they had the space and they had an existing classroom. So then we had a grade-level team there instead of one person alone. And so I think it's 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 finding space and the right space. And then, you know, we're in a teacher crisis right now. So finding teachers is also, right, and finding ones that are going to meet our our standards is also a challenge, but not one that I'm not willing to take on.
Claire?
So I'm I'm wondering, so with the Elmwood Community Center, that pre-K is not part of WHPS?
No, that's a completely separate. Actually, the Elmwood Community Center doesn't have a pre-K. What they have is they have space that they rent to the YMCA, I believe is their current provider.
And they will move into the new community center?
That hasn't been set yet. I've actually spoke to to Rick Ledwith about the plans for that. They plan on, currently in the design, again, remember, they're just doing their initial design work at this point. They plan on having, they plan on having classrooms. They don't know at this point what will be designated for the YMCA, or if the existing programs will fold over. But we have no, we have no classrooms there. That's not part of our of our planning for that.
Okay. So for dreaming, your five, ten, fifteen-year plan, and also along the lines, if universal pre-K is ever approved nationwide, it's a challenge. It's every city, every district is going to have the challenge. So are there are there people on the team dreaming, envisioning, looking? Because the what's going to happen is immediately, you know, it's the infrastructure issues, it's the hiring, and it's everybody all at once.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to a little bit. I mean, that's, that's really why, as Irene said, if if it happens, it has to be a a nationwide or a state-driven process for this, because it's going to, you know, for example, if we were to add, if we were to add classrooms, the difficulty is we don't have a building that has enough capacity that we would say this is now going to be our pre-K building or a pre-K space. There's there's design issues that go into the classrooms, everything. Again, I'm not making it up from the little potties, to to the way that the the rooms are laid out, the space configurations. It's a very, we can't just simply take an existing third-grade classroom and say, now you're a pre-K. There's, there's a lot of work that goes into that. And in part, that's part of what the Smart Start grants have been funding. They have funded that construction change. That's the encouragement piece that they that they kick in from the state. So it comes into play for that. We're not projecting having, having huge amounts of space available at the elementary schools over the next five, ten years, simply, and Liz will be talking about that at the next meeting, simply because we're, you know, as as we have, you say, we may not have four third-grade classrooms at Brayburn one year. We may have three in that cohort. What we're seeing, though, is we're having a greater need for our intensive academic spaces. We're seeing a greater need with our identified students that have special needs that may need additional spaces. And so that's what we're seeing for that. You know, that being said, if it was to come down from from the state or from the the federal government, I mean, there are opportunities and things that we would have to look at as a district, but it would mean i- in many cases, moving kids around, frankly. It would mean moving kids. If you said right now that we, the state came down and said, there's universal pre-K, and we want to add three classrooms to every one of the elementary schools, then we're looking at something like, okay, well, how do we then free up three classrooms in each building? And the easiest way to do that would be to say, we're sending the three hundred kids at Bristow back to Sedgwick and KP, and we're going to make Bristow a fifth-grade academy, where every student is going to go to Bristow for fifth grade before we send them off to sixth grade and seventh grade at KP and and Sedgwick. Again, it's a huge issue. It redistricts students. It up, it it changes everything that we're doing. But that's the only way really to get those fifth-grade classrooms out of the elementary schools. That's the thing, is that we, it'd be great if we were a smaller district and we had a building, that we could say, we'll just use that one. But we, we don't, unfortunately. And I've checked, and Rick will not give us one, because we've asked.
Even Faxon or
No, no. And again, they're both, I mean, the reason why the town is is rebuilding and not using Elmwood is Elmwood has some limitations. And Elmwood is not a a place that we could envision preschool, same as Faxon. Faxon's just not designed for for anything like that. And it has limitations as well.
Any other questions? Gail?
Last one. I was, I was interested in that you said that the kids that come out of this program in terms of their readiness for kindergarten is obviously impressive. And you talked a little bit about the ES, English as a Second Language Services. Have you ever looked at your own students that have been in this program who go through, let's say, through high school? What differences you've seen in kids that are graduates of this program coming out of twelfth grade?
That is definitely something that we want to look at. We, pre-COVID, we started to tag students that had been in pre-K so that we could watch them. COVID came, and I'll admit, we we stopped doing that. So that is, Carrie and I speak about that often. What I, you know, can tell you is kindergarten teachers will be like, don't even tell me. I know exactly who went to pre-K and who didn't. And they can, just those self-regulation skills, those readiness skills, being able to sit, attend, and engage in learning. So and not having to learn all the routines of school, right? They've already had a year or two learning all those routines.
There's actually a study, Gail.
I'm also, sorry, just want to, I'm also looking, I mean, I, it would be kind of interesting to look at that. And also, I'm particularly interested in academic achievement for kids that came out, as well as, you know, readiness and ability to self-control. But academics would also be interesting to know how these kids achieve compared to kids who didn't go to the program.
Right. So there's two things. So my first group of four-year-olds, when I came onto the district in two thousand and sixteen, are now fifth graders. So it's it's full circle for me this year with those with those kiddos. I think we can, we can certainly tag that and look at it longitudinally, and I I'm excited to see them moving forward.
I'll just add there, there's a recent study, it came out literally, I think, yesterday. Because one of the things in in pre-K research, early childhood research, is sometimes people see this fade out that people talk about by third grade. You have to sustain quality, high-quality instruction. So if you hear of those in the research, in West Hartford, you know, we actually see gains in students the longer they're with us over time. And Paul's, I know, presented that in the past. So we're not seeing that fade out at at grade three, say, for example, typically. But a recent study said, one of the the challenges of research is that so many of the kinds of things we're looking at, perseverance, the the ability to collaborate, all those kind of pieces that will support students through high school and beyond in the world, aren't necessarily measured in the same way as some of the academic pieces. But there's recent research that talked about job retention. So so, you know, we have to share some of those pieces that'll come out. But but we find, again, we don't see the same kind of fade out from our own experience, but we're we're on it. Thanks.
Gail, it's actually a great question, because it actually points, and Irene can talk to this as well. One of the biggest impacts we're still seeing from a group from COVID are those students who who missed or were interrupted when they were supposed to be or in preschool. That's a group that we're really, that's one of the hardest groups to recover, just because it is such a fundamental time. And once that's gone, it's gone. That's something that you, I know you guys and your your group has really been almost startled by the impact from some of that.
I think you said it perfectly.
Ethan?
During COVID, there was nothing for them?
So during the the shutdown in the spring of two thousand and twenty, our teachers worked, well, you know, screens are, in general, not great for young children, and they certainly aren't always ready to attend to a live person, maybe to, I'm trying to think of who, Paw Patrol, but they're not going to necessarily attend to their their teacher over a screen. So they had some contact during that time where they would do little small groups. They would do check-ins with families. But they really spent most of their time developing plans for families to do things with their children at home. So they were still having these rich experiences at home as best as they could. And then we we were open with everyone else as we went into the next year. We started off with, you know, red and blue weeks. We we came back as purple. And honestly, they, for three and four-year-olds, they did a really good job wearing masks as best as they could. I mean, there was, there's several slips here and there. And you can see in those videos that that was done during one of the COVID years. So you can see, most of them are pretty good at wearing their masks. But so they were not interrupted. But it changes a little bit, right? Just having a mask really sort of changed how the interactions were.
And and they were, they were, I will say, more, when you, when you look at the data as far as students that we had to quarantine, and students in classrooms that we had to close for moments, that was a much harder group that was hit. And we actually had a lot of conversations about that, simply because there's no way to contact trace in a class of sixteen, three-year-olds. They're all over, all over. It's a puppy pile. And so it it became, you described it to me once.
I think I said herding cats.
Okay. And and so it it became an exercise in if we, in working with the Health Department to be safe. When when one of the students was was diagnosed, we had, in essence, the entire group, whether it was red or blue, would be out for that five-day period. And it was a real challenge, just because there was no, there's no marked way of of designating contact with that age group. We just assumed they were all touching each other. And I mean, that's just the nature of
Yeah, they hundred percent were.
Yeah.
But, you know, to to the credit of the Office for Early Childhood and SDE, they collaborated on guidelines for pre-K in the public schools specifically, and certainly in in the private sector. And it really, there was no social distancing. You know, if you can keep them three to six feet apart, you can try. But we did things like we reduced the number of children that are allowed to play in a center together. So instead of maybe four in the block center at a time, we made it two. So we tried to do things that seemed developmentally appropriate for them, and that we're going to allow them to engage in a meaningful school experience without them just being like redirected to stay apart from each other all day. Otherwise, it just, you know, would have been a management nightmare.
They did come in.
They were, they came in. They sure did. And and quite honestly, their experience was probably the most normal of any students during that year.
They spent a lot of time outside, but yeah, they really, they they were there.
I'll just stop for this, Ethan. I mean, when you think about kids at that age, it's, and what they're doing in schools, learning the routines, learning the appropriate, kind of, as Carrie mentioned many times, play-based learning, but learning those those social skills to be able to interact with each other. And then when you factor in a significant amount of, you know, inconsistency to scheduling and attendance and things like that, I think it it helps to picture, you know, how it can slow the progression of those skills. And honestly, it's what all of our elementary schools and even into our middle schools have been dealing with since we've been back. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Yes, Renee?
So I just want to ask about, like, what are the next steps? What are you hoping to see happen in the next, you know, year or two? Are you hoping to add new classrooms? Kind of where where do you see this going?
I think we're very happy where we are, and we are serving many families in West Hartford. West Hartford. And I think the constraints that we discussed earlier are going to limit what we can do moving forward, unless some more state money comes, becomes available. I think we're always eager to, to take advantage of that. But right now, I think we're, we're staying where we are.
I'll just add, from a professional learning standpoint, from a staffing capacity standpoint, we have an incredible pre-K and kindergarten teams. And I think the more that we can collaborate and learn from each other as a team, Irene's done some excellent work in that conversations between those staff members. There are things that are happening in pre-K and approaches to learning that really could impact kindergarten through fifth graders, quite frankly. And the effectiveness of that program, I think, could really push up. I think there's a lot of conversation about things pushing down into pre-K. And I actually think we have tremendous opportunity, have begun to think about pushing up, and particularly at that pre-K to K level. There's such research out there that talks about children having such a dissidence of experience in many places in the country going from pre-K to K. They have choice, they have independence, decision-making, autonomy. And then in many pre-K classrooms, not in West Hartford, but other places, children are suddenly in a very teacher-directed environment. And that can be very challenging for children in their own regulation. And so I think we have lots of opportunity for, for even more, which with the great Wednesday early release time that we have, to be able to bridge that. So I see that as a tremendous and exciting next step for us.
I'm going to add one point, since you asked the question, Renee. Thank you. I'd like to just echo what Dr. Morrow said about the grants sunsetting. And, you know, I would hope going forward, we, we are operating, you know, creatively and collaboratively to find ways to maintain certainly what we have. And obviously, I heard, I heard Irene say she'd jump on any opportunities moving forward, but we, we all recognize the, the constraints of both space and budget.
Other questions, comments? All right. Well, thank you very much. I just, I must, wonderful presentation, wonderful insight into what is being done. I was tempted to say encore when the video was playing. That was beautiful. But I think it really speaks volumes as to the importance of the work that's being done. And I appreciate you describing how this is foundational teaching and learning. It's not just playing, but we're laying a foundation. I like the pinwheel describing the different attributes of a successful student and, and adult, who will soon be an adult. And we certainly do not want to minimize those opportunities. And with describing the importance of playful learning that's intentional. And you gave an example of, of an airport and planes and those things. And I just could not help but to think, oh, yes, it is important to learn early on self-regulation, those emotional intelligence skills, air traffic control, how to respond when your plane is canceled, your airline is canceled, and many others are canceled. So again, just highlighting the importance of these early years and planting the seeds for future development and growth. Thank you for leading the way with what you're doing from a genuine place of compassion. Thank you all so very much. And with that, we will continue on to routine matters, where we will have our financial report. And we are going to look to approve the financial report for the period ending December 31, 2022. Thank you so much, Liz, for joining us here. And going to pass it to Claire to get us going.
So the financial report shows a projected surplus of $650,000 at year end, and that's similar to, or same number last month. There is still, if you look on page 13, the paraprofessional salaries is an area that we have not been able to fill those positions. So that shows a lack, a lack of fulfilling that. There has been some behavioral specialists that have been hired that kind of are helping the special ed department for some of the places where we are shorthanded with paraprofessionals. And then the contracts are, contract employees are how we're filling some of the unmet hiring needs. Benefits, again, are expected to have a surplus of $25,000, and that's, I think you said about salary benefits because they're contract employees, correct?
Yes. We're also seeing lower unemployment claims this year compared to what we've seen in past years. So we're seeing a little bit of savings there.
Okay, thanks. And then, so down at the end, at the end of the year, they're showing a surplus of $25,000. And overall, things are on track as we expected. If you look at the grants, those we're continuing to monitor. There are some surpluses. The Esser III grant will have some money left over, but that is set to be used up in the 2023, 2024 year. But as you can see, a lot of the grants are ending, and that's part of what we anticipated for a challenge, that cliff that we might come to for some of the monies. For Special Programs Fund, overall, that was on target from last month. There is a $30,000 over for summer school. One of the things that's happening, or summer school is for credit recovery. It is not the extended, the ESY? Is it ESY? The ESY program, that's separate, but there is a loss of funds there. But there will be time this summer to use some of the fund, the grant funding to cover that. And then when we look at the nutrition services, the district made a decision to cover free lunches for the rest of December. That was about $95,000 to cover the lunches. We have seen more, over 100 more students have applied for free and reduced lunch, bringing the total to 27% of our students qualified for free and reduced. There's current quotes being sought for some of the infrastr- or not infrastructure, the equipment purchases for the different cafeterias. Some in particular might have a cinder block refrigerator, and so the quotes are being gathered to find out how to get a more modern approach to a refrigerator. And so that will be, that extra money will be used to help bring some of our equipment in the cafeterias up to date and more energy efficient. And the other thing, this, I'm, I'm just curious, this number of free reduced lunch, that will have an impact in other areas as well, right? So that as far as some grant funding, because now our needy population is, is higher?
Sometimes the percent of free and reduced lunch does affect the amount of grants that we receive. And certain grants, that is a factor. 27% isn't that much different from the past. We've been close to about 26, I believe, in prior years. It is unusual to receive or to get that many new students enrolled in January, but certainly the end of the universal free meals was kind of an impetus for families to, to apply and see if they qualified.
And that summarizes. Do you have anything to add?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
I did want to just add one thing. When we had met previously, you had asked about the drop in the meal counts, and we didn't have the figures through January, but we have seen that now. We've seen on an overall basis for students who currently pay for breakfast but had been receiving it free, there's been a reduction on a daily basis of 60%. And for lunch, we've seen a decrease in our meal count and our daily averages of about 37%. So it's varied a little bit between elementary and secondary. Elementary for lunch has gone down approximately 29%, and our secondary has gone down approximately 45%. We may see a little bit of rebound with that as we get to February. This was a change for our families. And so I expect that we'll, we'll see some leveling off of that over the next month.
One thing, if I'm reading it, it's still cumulative, month to month, it seems like, for the month of December. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, cumulative?
It was positive to 30,000 that you showed me.
Yes, yes.
So even though the numbers are down, it's still in that positive.
Exactly. And so for the month of December, we had, I believe it was 20 school days, 18 or 20 school days, approximately 10 of those, we received federal funding. And then for the last seven or eight, we gave free lunches that were worth, and free breakfasts that were worth $95,000. So we'll see the full month of not having universal free meals in January. And so when we go over the report next month, I think we'll be able to see really a full month of what that impact will be.
Okay.
Any questions or comments? And thank you for the follow-up with that information. Any questions or comments of what has been shared? Right, well, seeing none, seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the financial report for the
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, let me seek it first.
No, that's fine.
Seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the financial report for the period ending December 31, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Ethan. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Claire. Any discussion? All right. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. Now moving, thank you, Liz. Thank you. Now moving to approval of the minutes, and seeking a motion that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting of January the 17, 2023.
So moved.
Thank you, Jason. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ari. Any discussion? All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? The ayes have it. Thank you. Moving on to information and reports. Do we have any board members who would like to communicate, provide any reports or updates? On any other boards? Seeing none. Any other information and discussions? Seeing none. Moving to future business, announcement of future meeting dates. We next will come together on Wednesday, February the 22, 2023, for our regular Board of Education meeting at 7:00. And for those who are wondering, why is that a Wednesday? That's because school will be closed for the winter break in, on that Monday and Tuesday. So we'll come together next on Wednesday, February the 22, followed by Tuesday, March the 7, 2020, that is, 2023, regular Board of Education meeting, where we will receive presentation of the superintendent's budget at 7:00 here in room 314. Next, Wednesday, March the 15, we will have our budget workshop number one, right here in room 314. But don't go, we're coming back again. Tuesday, March the 21, for our regular Board of Ed meeting here at 7:00 in room 314. And then Wednesday, March the 29, where we first will have our Board of Education public hearing, followed by our budget workshop number two, the second budget workshop, that is, here in room 314. The Town Hall. Do we have a request for future agenda items? Seeing none. Do we have any visitors here that would like to make a comment? Seeing none. We do not have an executive session. Therefore, we'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned at 8:39.